I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome everyone who's also watching from home tonight. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer.
Present.
Trustee Gatt.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Riker.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
All right, good to see everyone. We have a quorum. Next is approval of the Board of Trustees' minutes from March 18th, 2025. It asks for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We would be at comments from the audience on agenda items only. If anyone is here tonight to address the board on anything on the agenda, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Public comments open. Public comment, going once, twice, public comments closed. We would be at old business. Any old business coming for the board? Hearing none, let's get right into new business. There's two items under economic development. The first is ordinance 2025-1758, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a Peoria Heights TIF District Number Three TIF redevelopment agreement, buy-in between the Village of Peoria Heights and Pearl Enterprises of Illinois LLC. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
In a second, please.
Second.
I'm going to turn it over to you, Trustee Kazam, to start. We also have Nick Nelson here tonight, and James Kemper and John Elias representing the Pearl Companies. Go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
So I think I've spoken with all my fellow trustees about this issue before this evening's meetings. We've been in negotiations with Pearl Enterprises for the last few, couple of months, I would say, with this project. I think you've all read the TIF agreement that's being presented this evening, and if you have any questions, as the mayor said, there are plenty of people here this evening who can hopefully answer those.
Nick, before I take questions from the board, is there anything you'd like to say before we take any questions, to preface? If you do, please come forward. And Mr. Elias, I'll give you an opportunity next.
So, for the most part, this agreement's a pretty simple agreement and tracks what else the village has done. It's an 80% reimbursement of the net increment generated by the project and the property. Where it differs a little bit, there are essentially three phases to the project. Phase One A is the primary rehab of the Pearl building. Phase One B, and then that'll be for up to $6 to $8 million. Phase One B will be more extensive rehab to that building, up to another, potentially $23 million. And then Phase Two is development of the peripheral properties that Pearl owns surrounding that. And that can be up to an additional $6 to $7 million. Now, the village's TIF plan, so you've already committed some dollars towards existing private developments. So, the plan allows for $18 million in private project reimbursements. $8 million of that has been committed already. So you had $10 million left to work with going into the negotiation for this deal. We wanted to leave a little bit left over just to accommodate future projects, especially if anything residentially happens down the street. So we arrived at a cap under this agreement currently of $8 million. Now, there's no obligation to amend the plan on the village's part, but if you do amend the plan in the future, where you need to do a major amendment, where we have to do the notices and the joint review board meeting and the public meetings, if you undertake that process, then there's an obligation as part of that to increase the plan by an additional $30 million to accommodate a cap of up to $38 million under this agreement. And then, there's language in this agreement that if and when that happens, then the cap in this agreement automatically jumps up to $38 million. Not that that's going to be reimbursed, that's just up to the amount you can reimburse if there's enough increment there to do it. So, the other feature in this agreement that's a little bit different, if and when the developer completes Phase One A, so there's no obligation to do anything, but if we get to the point where the developers completed Phase One A, then there's an obligation to undertake burying of the utility lines, overhead utility lines from, help me out, Wayne Prospect to...
Just east, so across the intersection east of Prospect to Atlantic?
Atlantic.
Yeah.
Okay. So, my understanding is the village is currently in the process of getting estimated costs for that from all the utility companies. So the obligation in this agreement is if and when Phase One A is complete, then the first $300,000 of that cost, the village has to cover. The next $300,000 of that cost, Pearl has to cover. Then the next $400,000 of that cost is split 50/50 between the two parties. If the estimates come in at higher, so that's a total of $1 million. If the estimates come in higher than $1 million, then that provision in the agreement can be rejected by either party with notice to the other party. And then the other party would then have the opportunity to agree to cover whatever the additional cost above a million is. And then both parties are obligated to kick in their, you know, their share up to the $1 million. But again, that obligation does not exist until Phase One A is complete.
Thank you. We'll come back to you, I'm sure, for a lot of questions. Mr. Elias and Mr. Kemper, would you like to make any statements about your project?
I'll just make a couple of statements. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Gary Pearl and his company. And first of all, on behalf of Gary, who's not here, I want to thank the board for entertaining this deal. This is an important transaction for Gary. They've been here 70 years. I've been with them for 25 years, starting with who I called the chairman. He's a deceased father, who was one of all-stars in my life, and it's just been a wonderful relationship, and now there's a new chapter. The company that he sold to was using some of the building. The rest of the building is going to be leased out. And when Nick referred to two stages in Phase One and Two, Phase One is the external appearance, an office for Gary upstairs, and putting the bones of the building ready to build it out for tenants as they come along. There's no reason to build out the tenant space until somebody comes along and says, "I want 8,000 feet at this fit-up." So that's why there's two phases in Phase One of the project. And the rest, the side project, is just because things change, and knowing Gary, he'd get a big kick out of developing, and probably in his own mind, he's thinking to do something that he's not committed. And the reason, the non-committal that Nick referenced is actually right legally, but it's only in right one sense. There's no reimbursement obligation on part of the village unless he builds out Phase One A, the first part, the $6 to $7 million. So there really is a commitment. And also, if he builds out Phase One A, which he's going to make sure he does, I'm pointing to James, that's what triggers his obligation to put, I don't know, when you build it out, it'll probably be half a million dollars, in the public improvements in the street. Now, that may not sound significant to you guys, but this is a private developer putting money in a public street beside his building to make it look better and to make it more conducive to the first-class office building he's going to try to make it to be. So, there's some pictures that James is going to show you, but I'm really here to answer any questions, but mostly to say thank you on behalf of Gary and frankly, his father.
Thank you, Mr. Elias. Hang loose, I'm sure there'll be some questions. Wayne, I'm going to let you have the last word, then we're going to open it up for questions and discussion.
Thanks, Mayor. So, yeah, thanks to Nick and to John, I think those are good summaries of, you know, the primary terms of the agreement. So I'll talk a little bit later about the utility underground and give you some more information on that. But first, I think maybe having James up here to kind of give us more of an overview of the project and, you know, John talked about the phases of the project, so maybe a little bit more on that and what's anticipated at this point in time, which could change.
All right, welcome, Mr. Kemper.
Thank you. Nice to see you in the center there. It's the last time, right? All right. Gary and his family have been here for 70 years, three generations of Pearl in this building right across the street. There's going to be 50 to 60 new employees coming there very, very shortly. So it's a key piece, I believe, to the Heights. Gary, his family, just loves this place. They're dedicated to it. It's, this project, you probably don't know this, but this is about 10 years in the making. I went back into my archives, just, you know, checking it out. I had a project number where we were looking at the renovation of this in 2015. So it's been a long time in the making, and Gary is ready to pull the trigger on this now, and he is 100% in on this, as John was saying. I am there to keep it moving with him. Phase One, hopefully that'll be done about this time next year, as long as we get your approval tonight, and hopefully in a year. That will be Gary Pearl sitting at his desk, right there. And that's happening, as I said, right across the street, right over there. And you may not know this, but the very front, right there at the corner of Glen and Prospect, the building looks like it's two stories, but it's really not. That's a fake mansard, basically a big fake parapet roof. So we're going to tear that off. We're also going to tear a lot of what's underneath of it out, and we're going to build a second floor on. And the second floor, about half of it will be that office, a conference room and a place for a secretary. The other half of it will be rentable space that he would rent to a tenant. Underneath of that, which I will show in some of the slides, will be a space for retail. Right at the corner of, you know, right main corner, the gateway to Prospect Heights from this side will be retail there. And we'll have three spaces, three on-street parking spaces that'll be used for that retail. Let me go through the slides a little bit so you can get a feel for the project. It's really high quality, something really not done in Peoria much. You will see projects like this in Chicago, New York, very upscale places. He is doing this right. He's not, frankly, he's not going to make his money back on this project. He's doing this because he wants to give to the Heights. So this is a look at inside of his office. It's a rather large office. You can see Gary sitting there behind his desk, all happy that he said yes tonight. The rest of it, beyond the wall over there is the secretary area. It's another view. You can see out over the intersection from that side. And Gary purposefully wanted his office situated so it looked down Prospect. He deeply cares about this community, and he wants to be able to open the shades up and see the community that his family had what he considers a big part of. I believe Pearl is the largest employer in the Heights, and they are very, very proud of doing that for 70 years. Another view, looking down Prospect, we talked about. There's also a deck out there. So he'll have the ability to go out, hang out on the deck. When you have your festivals out here, he might hang out and say hi. Another view, and then the outside. So, if you're on Prospect driving up toward Glen, this rendering doesn't show up, but there are three spaces in the front of that, three on-street parking spaces, and the entire base level will be available for retail. As soon as we, if we get a yes vote tonight, we will actively be out looking for tenants to fill that spot. Potentially one, two, or three tenants. It's very easily divisible. The first phase, the One A that we were talking about, is essentially fitting it out so that it could be leased, is what that is. The top level is the office level that I was talking about before. What's shown closer to us, that's Gary's office and the deck, and the other space at the corner, that is rentable space for somebody to be able to rent and take. So if you know anybody that wants some office space, let us know. This is what it would look like at night. Lights are on, it would be a beacon, again, the gateway to the community. Another view of it, we're retaining the brick at the base level, but we're going to do what's called a whitewash to it, since we're going to have to be, we're going to be needing to use new bricks in certain spots and existing bricks. We're just going to take a whitewash over. You'll see some, there's buildings on Grand View that have the whitewash on it. It looks really nice, really, really cool look. The top level of this, it's hard to see in the images with the screen, but that is a zinc cladding, very high-end material. It's not like a metal panel where it looks really ostentatious and overly corporate. It is a panel where they're seamed together, sort of like a copper. Zinc is a natural material like copper. It patina's like copper. It does not fade in the sun like a lot of painted products. It's a really, really high-quality material, and we believe it would be a great material for people first coming to Peoria Heights to see what a high-quality community Peoria Heights is. There's a view at night, and view at night, and that is what our images show. Any questions for me?
I just want to make a couple of comments. You answered these questions, but I just want to point them out again. So, what we're seeing here, and what's also in the original emailed agenda for us, is Phase One A.
Correct. Correct. Phase One A is the addition, the renovation of that base level, but also the re-cladding of the entire building and refinishing of it.
And you intend, or the developer intends, to start immediately if we vote, you know, positively this evening? And I read in our agenda that, or our documents here, that it's an 18-month build-out, year to 18 months?
Yes. The 18 months is what was negotiated on that. It should take less, but, you know, there's acts of God, there's other things that occur, so we're hoping that it's completed in 18 months. We do have a pending contract with a contractor at the moment, so we're ready to go.
Okay. And then lastly, for right now, you will be actively looking for tenants for that first-floor space?
Absolutely. It would be not in Gary's best interest not to start looking now.
Okay.
Thank you. So we're open for discussion and questions?
I have one. So the current tenant that is there now, who bought Pearl Industries' firm, where are they going to be in this rendering? Are they in the backside? Like, do you have a view of it from down Glen?
I do not, we do not have a view of it from down Glen. The tenant that bought Pearl Insurance, they will remain in the building, and they will grow within the building, and those spaces will be remodeled as we move on, as John was talking about, the other phases of the project.
But they're on the first floor?
They are on both floors right now, and they might be, we do not have a plan for where they're going. That's the Phase One B.
Okay. So they're going to basically stay exactly where they are right now, this is just adding up to the block?
So this building is made for 300 people, 350 people. Pearl Insurance, that was, what is it, management, risk management? Yes. The new company is called Risk Management. They do not require that much space, 350 people. So they are going to be, they are growing at this moment. Like I mentioned earlier, it's going to be 50 to 60 people in the next three to four months, and there will be a space in this building remodeled for them, and there will be other spaces ready for new tenants, which we have not, until we know it's a project, we're not actively trying to find those tenants.
Okay. So if we were to get to One B, there would be another addition to...
No. No, the amount of space that's in this building will, yeah, will not change. There's 52,000 square feet in the building. We're adding, this addition to the top is 3,700 square feet added to that, so that's approximately 58,000, 59,000 square feet. Yes. So, the remaining space after the Risk Management takes their area, there will be a sizable amount of space that we can rent to other businesses and bring them in, and that is the goal.
So then Phase Two of this project would be a separate building, and where would that be located on the property?
Correct. And that has not been identified yet. There's not been any design done on that. It is, Phase Two is the other property that currently, I believe it's in your pamphlets or handouts. He has two separate pieces of property, and I think they're identified as Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Two likely going to be a considerable amount of retail addition to that area. If you know where Oliver's is over here, there's another building next to that that he owns, and he owns all the properties all the way along Samuel, I believe. And one of his goals is to add retail to that area. That I do know. The other plans, we have not got to that yet.
Okay. I don't have, I have questions on things from the agreement, but not on the design.
Well, we'll get Mr. Nelson up if...
Okay. So, I just had questions when we were talking about the TIF agreement, that you said that we had $10,000 left in the TIF that we could use for projects, so that would be, we have $2 million remaining that we can utilize.
Correct.
Correct? Now, is that for only TIF One, or does that include the amount of money that we would have if we were to combine, like, the contiguous TIFs with that?
So, you can use money from adjacent TIFs in this TIF district. The problem isn't having enough money, the problem is you don't have enough costs. And so, you have to have enough costs in TIF Three, and that's where the shortage is. So you may be looking at amending this. Now, you can, we can adjust that number, that $18 million number for CPI, and then one time 5%, but that's not going to be enough to accommodate a $30 million project. So it is possible you're going to have to amend this TIF district in the future if you get other projects, and they're of a sizable enough nature.
Okay. And then to clarify, if we increase this TIF, we then are liable for more reimbursement on this project?
So it increases the cap in this agreement. It goes from $8 million to $38 million. But all of that is dependent upon how much increment the Pearl Properties generate. So it's not that you're going to owe $38 million, it's that, you know, if they generate that much money, then he can receive up to, or Pearl can receive up to that amount.
I mean, I feel like $8 million to $38 million is a big jump. Like, is that normal? Like, is it more common, like, is it unreasonable to think that we would do a cap at, like, $20 million?
There's no reason the cap wouldn't have been $38 million right from the beginning if the costs were available in the plan to do that. We just didn't have enough room in the plan for it.
Okay. And then, we don't have to bury the lines until this Phase One A is completed?
That's correct.
Is, I know we're construction, so is that logical to not bury the lines until it's completed, or should we be doing that?
It's a concern for me, you know, as, from a construction standpoint, that's a valid concern.
I mean, is it more expensive to do it after than, like, at the same time?
Yeah, I think everybody would prefer that it gets done with the project. So we, you know, the triggers, we might have to discuss what triggers that. I know we have a trigger of $1 million, is it, Nick?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Would you explain the trigger mechanism? And... Yeah, so that provision in the agreement's still going to exist. So if we're worried about, you know, what costs today is going to be less than what it's going to cost in a year from now, we still have that provision in the agreement that has that $1 million kind of trigger point, where if it gets beyond that, then it's going to be up to one party or the other to agree to pay that additional amount.
So my strategy would be just pursue the undergrounding as soon as possible if you, you know, agree to. And that, things will take time. It sounds like, you know, Pearl is ready to go with the contractor, and so that hopefully they'd get started soon this spring. And we'll continue to work with the utilities, you know, with all the details there. So hopefully, you know, it'd work out, you know, so we can do the work with the project.
Okay. And then, with this construction being so close to Glen and to Prospect, have we thought at all about, is this going to impede traffic flow or anything like that?
That was, Gary, my question.
It will to some extent, but what the utilities do when they bury anymore, and there's different methods, but usually they bore lines, so they might have to dig a hole on one end or the other, and then they bore the conduits in.
But what about the construction as a whole, affecting bus routes for schools and...
I think the roads, my philosophy is always leave the roads open, like, handled with lane closures and dustin's is too, you know. We can deal with things through lane closures, and usually utilities do a pretty good job because they're very safety-conscious, and they know to do that. So, you know, it's a busy area, but because the utilities work in these environments all the time, I'm pretty confident, you know, that they'll be able to handle it. But, yeah, it's not, I don't anticipate a big excavator sitting out there and digging a big hole every time another utility's going in. I expect that they coordinate their work, and I also expect, you know, it to be an underground bore, starting at one end and coming up at the other end, that type of thing. Yeah, so hopefully that, but my goal is, I agree, I mean, it's schedule-wise, it'd be nice to get everything kind of done at the same time.
I have two other things, Wayne, kind of more for you. One, will you just explain, I think for the public, since we're recording, I don't think everyone understands kind of what I had asked you about today, like, the percentage that we receive back, that we would give back in TIF is after all the taxing bodies...
And Nick can confirm that. What we do is we say 80% of the net...
Yeah, so it'll be 80% of the net increment. So what we do is we net out the developer's share of any payments for intergovernmental agreement, basically your school district agreement, and then administrative fees. So if they generate $100,000 in increment, and you have, and then how we get to that ratio is we take the increment generated by that project, divided by the increment of the entire TIF district, and that comes up with a percentage. And then we apply that percentage to the payments for administrative costs and the payments for the school agreement. And then that gets netted out of the total increment before we apply that 80%.
I just know that the community sometimes doesn't always understand, you know, when they think when we enter into a TIF agreement that the school suffers, and I just wanted to clarify that the school will still be benefiting. I don't remember what my last one was.
I would like to interject. I don't mean to get you off track, but I think that's a good point, because we're very unique in making sure that the school district is whole in the development agreements we've done in the past, so thank you for pointing that out.
Oh, I do remember my other question. So I know that really we have not done 80% in a TIF agreement. I know, well, we did have higher for Vex from what I'm understanding, but there's, they have different taxing, you know, entities that we receive income from. We really haven't been higher than 75% since this board has been here. So do we feel that this is a precedent moving forward? Because I think there's going to be a lot of these TIF agreements that are coming our way, that, is that standard, right? Like, is 80% standard?
I would say, you know, this is a catalyst-type project. I mean, it's a major, Pearl owns the entire block, you know, and we want them to do the entire block, so it's a major project. So I would say that this is a benefit because they're early in the game. You know, I think we should consider that. We also want to maximize the life of the TIF.
Sure.
So typically, I think, you know, that's the way I always see TIFs, is give more benefits upfront, you know, for the people that take the risks. So that's the way I would interpret that 80%. I think if, you know, if another project came in, say, you know, something super exciting, hotel, et cetera, et cetera, we might, you know, encourage more TIF on something like that. But I think this project, because, you know, Gary's been a good neighbor, and he's early to get things done, I think that's why the 80% is there.
Thinking as the TIF dwindles down, we may give a lesser percentage?
That's, yeah, something you should consider, yes.
And I could also speak to this point a little bit, too. This is also not a new project, it's a rehab-type project. So, you know, if they sink $30 million in this building, they're not going to get $30 million probably worth of increased real estate value. So that, you know, generally rehab project, that money's going to have to come from somewhere else or in a higher percentage. So a lot of the other projects that the Heights has done have been more for new construction projects, but where that doesn't work, like here, you know, the percentages can be higher, or that's when we get into, you know, grants or forgivable loan-type incentives.
Thank you.
Nick, you mentioned about expanding potentially the private redevelopment projects from $18,500,000.
Trustee, I don't mean to interrupt, but just for the benefit of everyone who's going to be watching from home, reminding everyone, speaking so everyone at home can hear as well. Thanks.
So, expanding that $18 million, would that proportionally expand the public redevelopment projects as well?
The public project costs are pretty high, but if you're going to be going through the process of doing that type of an amendment, there's no reason not to increase costs across the board. So what I would say is if you're going to go through that process, you know, increase the public costs, increase the private costs, but you're going to have to keep in mind the obligation under this agreement that you're going to have to increase it by at least $30 million for Pearl. So you're really going to have to increase your costs by $30 million plus, you know, the other private projects that you're trying to incentivize.
And as far as triggering the burial of the utility lines, are those TIF expenses? So those would eat into the $8 million for the...
No, those don't eat into the $18 million, those would be public. We could pass those off as public costs, they'd fall under the public cost section.
On both sides of the, both from the public as well as the private developer, they would both eat into the public cost?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Is that a BDD eligible expense though?
I believe so.
If it's in the BDD, it'd be a BDD eligible cost, yeah.
So that's how we would, you know, propose to initially pay for that is through BDD?
Our share, that's what we were thinking. And just thanks to Wayne while I'm thinking of it, because early on I thought it would be a very simple answer to what the cost would be of the utilities, but it's been quite a challenge for you, so.
Do you want me to explain that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
So this is kind of, this is the big ticket item for us. So, you know, and I've got some history with this, relocating utility lines for both projects where you can tell the utilities relocate, like if they're in the street and they're in your way, you can tell them to relocate and they're bound to do that. But I've got some experience with two other projects where we just wanted the utilities to move for similar reasons. Visually obstructive, I think if you look, you know, down the street in an urban area, especially a downtown area, if there's power poles in the street, to me personally, that's the most visually obstructive thing in the street. So that's why in a lot of cases you consider moving these or undergrounding them. So I would say, so at some point in this project, you know, you might ask me, Wayne, can we do something with those power poles? I think that would, that would be a consideration we would make either with Glen Avenue or Prospect Road. Now, we're lucky, this piece is pretty bad, this block of Glen, but as we go south on Prospect, we're kind of lucky for three or four blocks that the utility poles are in the alleys. So they don't really obstruct the, you know, the main streetscape or roadway area. Then you get south of Marietta and they start occurring back in the roadway. So, but in my experience, that's something that, boy, it'd be nice to get rid of those power poles or relocate them in some fashion. So, so I, you know, generally, I like, I support this kind of project personally.
And part of our thinking to be open to the village paying part of the cost of the utilities is that it's really in our neighborhood. It's our next door neighbor, so to speak, but I'd ask Administrator Sutton to elaborate on the challenges we have because of the power coming into the building. That's quite often the transformers are offline across the street and we experience lots of trouble here.
Yes, that was one complaint that Mr. Pearl had brought up during our conversations. That continue, that transformer continues to blow and it does, we do have a generator, but it does take our computers out for quite a while. So yeah, it does impact the village as far as their power outage.
Is that why our phones go down here so frequently?
Correct.
So that's, that's an opportunity to work with the power company and say, we got these problems and, and, you know, along with, you know, the conduits I spoke about, there'll be new switchgear, there'll be new transformers, that type of thing. So it's an opportunity to really, you know, if we're having problems, either Pearl or the village, we can improve that, improve the services.
Well, and we're also thinking, so we've been successful in grants for Prospect, or not Prospect, for Glen Avenue, the walkability grant, I forget the correct name for that, but to enhance the road to make it more pedestrian friendly too, to get those utilities out of the way. We were again open to talking about all that.
Right, right. So a little bit more about the utilities. So again, it's, it's an expensive project and I told this to the team originally and it's hard to work with utilities when, when you talk about project management in the public world, there's three things that you don't necessarily want to deal with unless you have to. One is utilities, one is railroads, the other is environmental issues. So not to say they can't be dealt with, it just they're, they're a little bit more difficult than other groups to coordinate with. But I will say in my experience, utilities have gotten a lot better and I think it's because of several ICC rulings over the years that have been passed down that, you know, kind of say you need to respond to this if it comes up and I think that's what, what this is. So just a little details to consider, I do have some costs. So there's, Amarin is a major utility located on those poles and they own the poles. So they're the primary utility out there. By lease or some license, there's two other utilities on the pole. One is Comcast and the other we've been trying to track down, it's been difficult. I think it's Windstream. And so I've got costs from both Comcast and Amarin, an estimate to do this. So the Amarin cost with a 30% contingency, which is substantial, is 689,000. Comcast is 60,195 and Windstream, I'm estimating at 100,000. So when you add those costs up, it's about 850,000. And as the agreement exists now, we would split that in half, so about 425,000 each. Now, again, we would go back to utilities in each, in all cases and say, you know, is it really going to cost this much, et cetera, et cetera? What about this contingency? And then I would predict that each of the utilities would, we would have some sort of agreement to relocate underground with. So that's been my experience. But that's, that's the scope of the cost at this point in time. So it's, it's just a, you know, and those numbers are larger than I expected frankly. So that's, that's where we're at.
Nick, the Section C2, which talks about this, the burial of the power lines, if in fact it goes over a million dollars and there's not, there's not a motivation to move forward with that project, it's just the power lines that, the burial of the power lines that stops, right? It's just that C2. Nothing else in the agreement is affected by not wanting to bury the power lines and proceed on that, right?
That's correct. Like I said, that's, that's the beauty of the pay-as-you-go type agreement is there's really no risk to the village, especially if this part of the project is entirely relying on completion of Phase 1A. So if they can, so to the extent that the developer completes Phase 1A, you'll have the obligation to pay the 80% of the net increment, but if the cost exceeds a million and neither party wants to take that additional amount on, then there's going to be no obligation to do that.
And I'm very comfortable with the timeline of as far as this project and the developer's willingness to proceed with Phase 1A and then would trigger the obligations under the village from C2. So I think that is, it's a, it's a good faith effort to protect the village. I understand that it would make more sense to do it simultaneously, but I think the developer willing to complete Phase 1A is a, is good faith effort to protect the village. And so I'm very comfortable with the timeline of the burial of the power lines.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would like to say, I think, well, I know, I've preached to you over the years about being laser focused on developments that were high sales tax generating businesses. This will generate some sales tax, but really gets me somewhat excited about this or very excited is the head household jobs that Gary intends to create. And I mean, that number is somewhere around 50 to 60, I believe, has been used and I think that's really important also. And so that's why I think this is somewhat unique and a little bit different than some of the past agreements we've entered into. Anyone else? Any closing remarks, Mr. Elias or Ms. Kemper? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reiker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Give our best to Gary.
Thank you.
Nick, thank you. And just for the record, those in the audience, Mr. Nelson is attorney for Klein and Associates. We have our own general counsel here for the village, but Klein and Associates do all of our economic development agreements and they do a terrific job. So thanks, Nick, and our best to Steve too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we would be, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2025-1757, in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a business development District 1 redevelopment agreement by in between the Village of Peoria Heights and Charlotte Beck Doing Business as Golden Finch Boutique and Coffee Shop, 1308 East Cyberling Avenue. Trustee Kazam, it asks for motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Great. Well, I see Charlotte in the audience this evening. Recently she has started renting the property on Cyberling that was formerly Global Village and actually Field Crate, I think, was the store next to, next to it. She will be combining those two spaces and really doing a significant amount of improvement to the interior of the space, also doing some ADA compliant renovations and that type of thing. And we are proposing reimbursing her up to $10,000 for those investments.
Mr. Aldrich?
And Charlotte's in the audience here, so new business to the village, so thank you. A little bit different deal, it's a simple deal, but it's a little bit different because a lot of times we do these kind of deals for facades. In this case, the tenant is improving the interior space, really to, I think, to make it a better retail space overall. So, you know, sometimes I think in the past we've done that kind of forgivable loan, which we like for business specific things, but in this case I think there's reason not to do it that way because Charlotte's putting money into the interior space that will make it a better retail space for her or whoever after. So, so just welcome Charlotte to the Heights and.
Is there anything you'd like to tell, tell us about your business? It's a good opportunity.
Yes, hi. My name is Charlotte Beck Haley and I'm thrilled to be moving my business. I was in Washington for four years. I owned a building downtown. My husband sadly passed away last year and I thought I was going to go out of business. I sold my building, but I decided to stay in business and I've always wanted to be in Peoria Heights. So although it's a much smaller space than I was used to, I'm a very creative person and I like to show that to my customers. And so I'm going to be putting together my retail store, which is going to sell home decor, jewelry. I also have my own that's about to become a national brand. I have my own organic skincare line, so I'll be selling that there and then we're going to have a small coffee shop. The purpose in the coffee shop and none of my, none of the community knows that I'm even doing that part of it, but the purpose of it for me, business is very, very important. The environment that I create is extremely important to me. So if you go into a retail store, and I don't know if you've ever been to a retail store and there's just one clerk and it's kind of quiet and you feel kind of awkward, but you really want to shop, I want to take that out of the equation. I want there to be energy. I want there to be multiple, multiple employees. I want there to be commotion. I want there to be music so that people can walk in, feel comfortable to shop. It's a very small space. It's only about 800 square feet, but I'm really looking forward to being really creative and how I, how I utilize the space and build it out. I'm really excited, the outside of my building, I'm going to have a really cute, I would like to think it's going to be an award winning, beautiful outdoor seating area for the coffee shop because that's primarily where the seating is going to be because the space is so small. But that's just a little bit about my business and I hope to open by the end of May.
Well, thank you for considering Peoria Heights. We've, we're going to adopt two resolutions tonight. One, we just approved a very large development, which is important and exciting, but the strength of Peoria Heights, in my opinion, the business community, are small family owned businesses like yourself, so thanks for choosing us.
Yes, I am thrilled.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so did you purchase the building?
No, I'm renting.
Didn't we have a development agreement about this same building not too long ago?
Not this one, I don't.
We did with the owner. Yeah, we helped with the exterior improvements.
Was it the building next door or this one, Wayne?
No, it was this one.
What was that for, Wayne?
I believe awnings and some windows, things like that.
Yeah, doors, windows, painting, awnings.
I think, you know, as we're, we're currently considering guidelines for this, I think we would recommend not prohibiting, you know, if a tenant applies for a valid thing, then, you know, the owner could apply for a valid thing also.
And we've done, we have done that. We have precedent for that in the past.
Area to square as well.
But the improvements that are going to be made or being requested here are going to benefit the property owner, not necessarily the tenant, because they were.
I think they're multifold because you can see from the spreadsheet that Ms. Beck Haley is investing over $50,000 in the property, only requesting 10,000, a max of 10,000 from us. So I think some of it potentially is for the building, but some of it is for you as a tenant as well. But you can speak to that.
Yeah, sadly, I have a very high standard for my business and my brand. I owned a store, actually won the beautification award in 2020 in Washington for redoing the entire building. It was almost a 100-year-old building. My hope was that I was going to buy a property in Peoria Heights and that would be my long-term goal, is to buy a property. So I have a certain standard for myself and my business and what my customers expect of me. So right now, the way the building is, there's no way I'm going to be able to move in there with the way it looks. So I am willing to put a significant amount of money in it to keep my brand moving forward. I don't want it to be a downgrade from where I was before and my, my building before was outstanding. And it is pretty odd for somebody to own a piece of commercial property and then go to renting. I also own Freedom Ink Tattoos downtown in the Warehouse District. That was my late husband's, I mean, I helped him for 17 years, build that business, but we also own that. And so for us as a couple, we own two commercial buildings, so it was a really big decision for me to sell my building. But, so for me, like, I just have a certain standard for myself and I know my business is going to be successful. So me putting that money into the building and a lot of it is improving, it's flooring, it's the ceiling, it's the bathrooms, it's signage, it's building out an entire bar for a coffee shop, it's built in, like a built in bar for looking outside. So there's pretty much none of it's going to, not that much is going to go with me. It's going to be built in things for the space.
Does that answer your question, Dennis?
And Trustee Kazam is right, we have done this before at Perry Square and I think at the 5400 building as well. But Trustee Weisenberg is also correct, every time we've done it, we have raised our eyebrows and, you know, thought about considering whether that makes sense or not. We have always done it. We don't have a policy against it currently, but yeah, I think it's something to think about down the road.
I mean, I, from my business owner herself, like, the, even if we do, like, even if we've given money to the landlord for other things, like, the landlord in a commercial space doesn't always help you to get things to where you need to be to conduct business, you know? So then, just to fit, she's lucky she has drywall. I mean, one of my footouts I had to pay for the drywall. So you're in $100,000 just to open the doors and even though I had to pay for that drywall, when I leave, if, or when I would leave, the business owners still are going to reap the benefits that I paid to put all that drywall in. So while yes, it's helping the building owner, like, if you think about it in a different perspective, she's a small business owner, like, it's helping her too to get off the floor because she's investing $50,000 just to even open the door before she's going to make the dive.
I will say.
I think it's a good question. You always bring up a good point, Trustee Weisenberg, but will this generate more sales tax, put more dollars in the BDD to keep reinvesting? I think it will, but I'll say, what I always say, if you have some concerns, revisit the policy for the BDD expenses and so that way we don't do this every time something like this comes up. But you bring up a good point. I don't mean to, but I, I think it's a good investment.
Wayne, did you say that we are kind of looking at like what our protocols are?
Yeah, we've been looking at that, you know, and jotting notes down. I've met with Trustee Wigginton and Trustee Kazam on this. So I think, you know, I've got some ideas certainly down and I think in some case it may, you know, it should be more of a checkbox type of thing or this, this applies in this case kind of thing, so hopefully so.
I mean, I know you're not busy at all and you have all the free time in the world to do that, but maybe if we could just think about that moving forward, you know, with this new administration that we could.
Well, and I think one of the, when we didn't have as much money in the BDD, I think we were a little bit more selective in how we spent things and because of a good policy and because of a good local business climate, we have money in the BDD and now you may want to revisit that and make some changes. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reiker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you for being here. Good luck.
Thank you.
Anything else under economic development, Trustee Kazam or Mr. Aldrich?
That's everything for me. I know Wayne had some meetings this afternoon. I don't know if you want to speak to that. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Oh, yeah. This afternoon, met with the City of Peoria primarily about Prospect Road project. We're kicking that off on our end with Hanson Professional Services. So, you know, it's a good time to meet with Peoria. They're going to sit at the table with us, they're partners, because half of this road, you know, as we study all the way down to War Memorial, that is the jurisdiction of the City of Peoria. So also, so, you know, in partnership, trying to, that will help with grants and things like that, we hope, and we hope that at some point they, you know, do, you know, participate financially in the project. And then there was some discussion on what happens south of War Memorial Drive. So again, this project has been identified as a higher priority project on the Regional Planning Commission's long-range transportation plan, so it stretches all the way from Kingman all the way down to the zoo. So hopefully something can be done that's, you know, as we do the road in Peoria Heights, that it can be a more consistent corridor.
And I saw that in the Tri-County Newsletter that came out today, but just if I could elaborate a little why I think this is so vitally important to Peoria Heights, if you would think about Prospect Road, say, to Glen Oak Zoo, and the assets along that corridor from Luthy Botanical Gardens, the children's museum there near Glen Oak Zoo, Glen Oak Zoo, the Springdale Cemetery, the historic aspect of the Springdale Cemetery, the savanna that's in Springdale Cemetery, on out through all of the assets in Peoria Heights, from our downtown to Tower Park, and on out to Donovan, Donovan Park and Junction City, all these assets are not only connected by Prospect, they're also connected by the Rock Island Trail. And to turn this into, I might not have the best terminology, but a historic tourist area that would be branded by common lighting and landscaping and sidewalks, again, from all the way out to, from Glen Oak roughly all the way out to Donovan through Peoria Heights. So Peoria Heights being in the middle of this, I think we have a great interest because I think we would benefit the most. But you would have partners from the park district and the city and Peoria Heights. But when you look at the offshoots and what we want to do with Route 29, also connected by the Rock Island Trail and the trailhead that's going to be near the news span of the bridge and Route 29, the bike lanes there, I would just encourage you all to think, again, think what this could really turn into. So I appreciate your work on that and thank the Planning Commission for making this, again, a regional priority in three counties. And that's a pretty short list, isn't it, Wayne, of policymakers in three counties have identified this as a project, not only for Peoria Heights, but for the, important to the region, to bring tourists here to the region. And that's, you know, one of the things that brings a lot of money and generates sales tax and helps the local businesses here. So I would encourage you all to keep that on the front burner. Okay, anything else, Mr. Aldrich?
Zoning, we'll probably have some, our zoning folks will visit with us, probably in May, have some public meetings and individual meetings potentially, so anticipate that. The other thing, more Public Works-related, it's the season for our Congressional earmark request, so Mike and I have been working on the one for Senator Durbin that came out last week, so probably submit that this afternoon yet to Senator Durbin, then expect the Senator Duckworth and then Congressman Sorenson to come out soon with their request applications. So what we're requesting this year is another water project that we've identified, and that's the Lake Avenue Water Main. So that's a substantial but very important distribution, east-west distribution line for us. So that's our project that we'll request funding for. Now, most of that we'll have to fund through Water Fund or some other type of funding, you know, as a match, but this is a good start.
Thank you. Incidentally, Trustee Wigginton and I will be going to Springfield tomorrow to lobby some of our elected officials on the state level, so thank you for that. Let's move on to Administration and Finance. Trustee DeBoer has two items. First is Ordinance 2025-1755, a special ordinance authorizing the seating of private activity bonding authority. Trustee DeBoer, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-1755.
Second.
Thank you, go right ahead.
Okay, this is an annual thing that we do, so Tri-County River Valley Development Authority always asks us to kind of do this. So we are allotted a bonding cap from the state every year, but if we don't use it, that money goes back to the state, and the state can use it in any area of the state that it wants. We have until May first to choose to allocate this money that we have not utilized as a bonding to Tri-County River Valley, and then it holds that money in our region. So if ourselves or any of the surrounding communities and municipalities want to do a major project, all those allocated funds can be put together, and then they can be bonded out through Tri-County. And then the, I think Tri-County holds those for three years. So since we haven't used it, it's beneficial to the Tri-County area by allocating it to them.
Very well put. I don't think we need to add anything to that, do we, Mr. Aldrich?
No.
Okay, and I mean, hopefully there's a day when we might, we might need that bonding. Any discussion, questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next is Ordinance 2025-1756, an ordinance authorizing the continued imposition of a residential waste collection and disposal fee. Trustee DeBoer, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-1756.
Second, please.
Second.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so since we have imposed the waste collection and disposal fee, every year we have to continue to pass the ordinance, keeping it either the same or raising it. So this ordinance is just for the next fiscal year to have the same garbage fee that we already currently have. We just have to pass it every year.
Discussion.
This might be too far, big picture, but I would like when we renegotiate the contract, which is in what year?
Three years.
In three years? Okay.
That ship sailed.
But, yeah, I would like to see, just for those that'll be here in three years, I would like to see the village get out of the garbage business, let the garbage companies handle the milling on their own, and the village just step away from it. I know Bartonville gives the residents several options on which waste disposal companies to go with. I've seen on Facebook and stuff, there's a lot of private companies now that are also offering monthly garbage or pickup for a monthly fee. And I think when private companies compete, the price goes down. So I would like to see the village at some point get out of the garb, get out of collecting the garbage fees for a private company and just let citizens elect whatever garbage company they want.
Has that worked well in the communities you're familiar with, or do you know about...
I think it has, yeah. I don't, I know people that live in Bartonville that have the option. I mean, they seem okay.
They can opt out?
They have, if you go to their website, they have several different waste disposal companies you can choose, so...
A lot of times, it is more expensive. We get a deal, it's more expensive for the resident to go that route. We get a deal because we're guaranteeing they're getting this amount of numbers. So 15 years ago, when I had that option myself, I was paying $90 every three months. I mean, 15 years ago. So I think we have, I think we should research it because we might be getting a better rate for the citizens by go, by agreeing that we're all doing it versus...
And I think, you know, one of the things is that county has negotiated a rate for unincorporated areas with GFL. Unfortunately, that rate is $42.50.
A month.
A month. So that's over double what we pay on our current contract. One thing about the, about going with, you know, allowing the individual to select whatever company they would want is we have to think about it from Superintendent Chandler's perspective, that we have three different companies driving their trucks on our roads at that point as well. So it would, wear and tear on our, on our streets could be from our pers, you know, could be more...
Well, being as I'm not going to be here after May, or I would prefer that we don't, that we keep going out for bid and having the same, instead of putting it on our residents to find their own garbage collector or, because if it's going to be left up to some people, they're not, they're not going to choose, I like the recycling, and some people will say, well, I can save money by not recycling. I think you just ought to leave things alone and three years, put it out for bid, because there's strength in numbers, and it helps the people who, well, I'm retired now, but it helps them. You've got strength in numbers in that we're guaranteeing that the village is going to do that, and you're going to get this set amount, and you don't have to worry about if you're going to get your money or not. So I would prefer, I prefer that you leave it alone and don't mess with it.
Incidentally, at one time, the village did bid garbage and recycling separately, and we were able to save, I think, $60,000 the first year on that contract by combining them. But I think you bring up an interesting point that the board will have, that might give you some leverage with the company that you're negotiating with, certainly.
And maybe it's just the communication part on our part, because we have no control over the costs. You know, if it's just one company that we lock into, you know, we have no control of those costs. And I get the comment a lot that, you know, garbage is included in our property taxes. Well, it isn't. So we're basically the middleman. Whatever they charge, we collect the fee and hand it over. None of that money comes to the village. So that's why I kind of would prefer the village to be out of it completely, but...
Well, I would say, Mr. Administrator, that a fair amount of calls we get here at Village Hall are related to garbage, really not?
Especially recently. Unfortunately, going back to the three-year contract, you know, we, GNO decided to get out of the garbage business after we just renewed, so, but I do think there are some areas we can negotiate with this current company. I mean, they do some very good things, but the transition has been a little bit rocky. I know it's been a lot better lately, but yeah, I do think there's, if that's the company we go with in the future, there are some things we need to discuss. But right now, we just don't have an option because they bought GNO. So we've been, it's been a moving target, but I think we've done a nice job, and I think some of the recent issues we've had locally have been addressed, and there's still going to be more. But again, you know, I urge you to call Village Hall if you're having problems. I had a couple of calls today that some residents have been waiting on a tote for two months. We got them delivered today. So, you know, I urge residents to reach out to us if you have problems. We'll take care of it. But, and I know that Trustee Reichert has been on speed dial on a few things she's had for me, but I think we've got through it, so...
Would it be a possibility, and maybe we can reach out to them and find out, but for them to meet with us as a board, to kind of build that relationship a little bit? Have somebody, I didn't, I noticed with the problem that we were dealing with with the school issue, that they sent somebody out, met with us, things got fixed a lot faster when we got to kind of...
Well, that was, that was phase three. Phase one and two were meeting in my office.
Yes.
So I think to answer your question, that has been going on.
Yeah.
We have the, you know, top-tier administration, and it's not just a phone call. They've arrived in the office when we have issues, and they bring, I don't have enough chairs, so I don't need all of them up there, but they do bring an army. But I do think they take us serious and...
They bring lunch, too.
I do think it would be slightly beneficial to have them maybe come to a meeting or something here where they put faces to names to the board and...
They would be more than happy to. They'd be very, very open, any accommodations we want, if that's what the board wants, we can set that up, whether it's monthly or bimonthly, whatever.
I just, the relationship that we had with our previous garbage people, I mean, we had, it was a built, a relationship built on years of, and maybe we can start building...
I think that anybody that had GNO knows that we were spoiled.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that, you know, that transition's been a little bit tough. But we're working through it, not only from the administrative side, but also the police side, the code enforcement side, because they get a lot of the calls too. What isn't being picked up? What is, what's being left? But, you know, I think we're working through it. I mean, we've kind of closed that gap, but if the board wants, you know, a monthly update, you know, we can definitely arrange it.
At least for a little while. I mean, beans, we've got three more years with them to be able to form kind of a little relationship with our board and not just put it all on you to meet with them, but see the faces of the people that are...
But I also, I also want to make note that how accommodating they've been. When I do call, they come, and it's not just a phone call.
The issue that we dealt with, they were, they were Johnny on the spot with everything, so...
Perfect.
That's why I'm saying, I think, bringing them in here and letting them kind of build that with us even might, might help people in the long run, especially if the village people know that they're coming.
When people saying it's included in their taxes, the reason they probably think that is for the longest time, the village, the people of Peoria Heights weren't charged for their trash pickup. It was free. Village paid for it, and they didn't have to worry about it. This stuff, then all of a sudden, they got, we got to shoulder some of the responsibility. That's how it got put on our water bills. But that's why they think that.
It was never free. You're going to pay through it this way, or you're going to pay through it through increased property taxes.
Right.
Pay for it some way.
Right, and so, and Chief Sudden, he checked that out, and said, better just go through the water company, and then now we're where we're at now, so please, don't do that.
I got three questions about trash pickup, but it's not related to the fee, so should I do that?
Will you bring, I'd like to, this is good discussion. I don't want to bring this discussion to an end, but the question before us is on the fee, so if you bring that up under miscellaneous, Trustee Weisenberg.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the imposition of the fee? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Trustee DeBoer, anything else for you under Administration?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Administrator?
No, ma'am.
Okay, let's move on to Public Works. Trustee Reichert has one agenda item. It's Ordinance 2025-1759, an ordinance amending Title VIII, Chapter 2A of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of establishing water rates in the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee Reichert, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-1759.
Thank you, a second, please.
Second.
All right, go right ahead.
All right, so we delayed the 10% water increase in the water capital plan that was scheduled 12/1 of '24, and we are skipping and are completely skipping the 8% increase, which was scheduled 12/1 of '25. Instead, we budgeted a 5% increase effective 5/1/25 and an additional 5% increase 12/1/25. This will ease the residents into the new rate and works well with recombining of the garbage bills around the same time. We continue to grow our funds for the capital improvement, water capital improvement plan, but skipping one rate increase was an acknowledgement of the grant funding and low-interest loans we've been awarded by the state. If I have anything to add?
Thank you, discussion?
So, Mayor, I voted against this last year when this came about. The reason being was that I didn't think we had anything to show for the rate increase. This year, we have on the way a $8 million filtration system that we are going to be instituting. We have new service lines coming in. We have a new main being done on Route 29. We have a lot of public infrastructure that is coming about very soon. So last year versus this year, totally different environment. We have a lot of forward progress moving, and I appreciate this board and this administration's movement forward in trying to address this problem to our residents, so thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you. Trustee Reichert, you still have the floor, anything else you'd like to report on?
I don't unless Superintendent Chandler does.
I can make comment to Trustee Wigginton's comment about the filtration plant. I've been informed by Don Toll that, Mayor, you will be receiving a letter approving the project of the filtration by the EPA. It's not the funding, it's the approval of the actual project. actual project. They give the approval to go forward with it. The funding should be announced in July, as far as how much we will get for that.
Very good. Thank you.
How long did that approval take to get?
I think they've been working on it for a couple of years, probably.
Federal EPA, state EPA?
Just for, yeah, I know, just for the public's consumption. We often, I often get the comment that we're not doing enough, we're not moving fast enough, but what people do not understand is that getting regulatory approval to do anything with water takes forever. I know when we were working on the water main for the failing water main for the country club, that even to replace one that was failing took six months of regulatory approval, and it was actively failing, and it still took forever to get approval to fix it, or to replace it.
The EPA is still in phase one.
Phase one, yeah. You never get out of phase one around here. So, I do appreciate the dedication and sticking with that. And on the Public Works thing, I have to ask, there's been a lot of brown water lately, like from Grandview to Longshore to St. Jude. It seems like it's all across the village. I've, you would not believe how many videos that have been forwarded to me here within the last couple of weeks. Do we have any idea what happened? Like, it wasn't localized, it was across the entire system.
Right. It wasn't everywhere, but it was a little below the hill, it was some up here, it was some in the Constantine area, the Heinz area.
There was some at my house, I never get it either.
Yeah, right. Something definitely got stirred up. May have been a combination of the weather going from twenty degrees to eighty degrees. It makes the chlorine and stuff reacts differently. It's a moving target. We chase it every day. It seems like it's, usually it has settled down. Unfortunately, people, you know, they don't say, "Oh, it's cleared up now."
Right.
They just leave it out there. But it seems like it, once they call, it's usually a few hours. If they follow our tips and our suggestions, they realize that it has cleared up. And it's, it is unfortunate, not what we're trying to do.
Right.
Totally not what we're trying to do.
Right. And that's just like the sediment, like the iron and something to it?
It is, it is the stuff in the mains getting stirred up, which I've said before, it took us a hundred years to get where we are. It's gonna take a little while to get out of it.
I say that all the time.
And we work on it daily.
Yeah, and it may, it may not appear from what I say here, but I fight this battle daily. And theoretically, as the filtration plant comes online, and we do the ice picking and the hydrant flushes, we prevent the stuff from getting in, and with the ice picking and the flushing, the existing sediment will be gone. So, at some point, here in the near future, this should dramatically improve.
Yes. The first key to it is to eliminate adding more to it, which is the first step, which is the filtration plant.
And that takes, took years to get approved.
Right. And it's gonna take a couple of years to build it, so.
Right. So, I know, I know the brown water's frustrating, but the EPA, is that the state EPA and the federal government, or is it just the state?
The I-EPA. The I-EPA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Trustee Wiesenberg. Anyone else? All right. Let's move on to miscellaneous. Trustee Wiesenberg, I'll give you your first shot.
Three things. So, we, actually, I'm sorry, four things. So, we include the trash bill now on the water bill. If someone, and they're separate bills now, right?
Yeah.
So, if someone does not pay the trash bill, are we disconnecting their water because they're not paying the trash bill? As I was out talking to citizens here in the last couple of weeks, I had a few that told me that they didn't realize that it was separated, and one, the trash bill didn't get paid, and their water was almost shut off. From a policy's perspective, I don't think we should be shutting people's water off if they don't pay the trash bill. I think we should shut their water off if they don't pay the water bill. But, I mean, they're two separate bills.
I'll refer to Superintendent Chandler here in a second, but do you remember when we had a resident come up and request this?
Right.
And we decided to change it? I think that administratively, I think we're discussing changing it back, it's been very confusing.
Okay.
You know, and I think that's gonna take time, but we're working on that, and we're working on getting some reminders out to going back to the old system, but it has been confusing for some people, not everybody.
Right.
But, you know, I know that we've talked, we've talked to staff about this, going back the other way. We've changed it for, I think it was one or two people, and I think that the complaints have not slowed down. So, Superintendent Chandler, do you want to comment on this?
I would, I would, as far as that, I would say, if you think about it, their water, they didn't just not pay the garbage. So, a lot of people didn't realize that the garbage bill was part of the water bill before.
Right.
It was thirty dollars of it.
Right.
They did, if they, if they just decided not to pay the thirty dollars of the water bill, they're still, they would still get their water shut off.
Yeah, no, but the comment I got from someone is that they did not pay the trash bill-
Right.
And their water almost got disconnected.
It's on the same, so it's on, it's part of the same account. It's billed separately, and that was done on request of a few citizens.
Right. No, I understand.
Be it to help separate the payment so it wasn't-
Right.
So much all at once.
I mean, I guess it's a new point if we're going back, but if we're gonna keep them separate, I would hate to shut someone's water off because they didn't pay the trash.
If we were to keep it the same, I think we should have that discussion, but since we're going back to the old way, I think it alleviates all that.
Yeah, it makes it easier for the people to tell you, "It's already on the bill, I pay that whole bill." They don't have to worry about another bill.
It's, it is the same amount. It's just do it a separate time.
Is. Yeah, you're gonna make another bill, might as well keep it the way it is, and-
And we're gonna send something out to the community, letting them know that we're going back to the old, old way. And what was the timeline on that, Chris? Were we discussing?
I'm, I wanna say two or two or three.
Chief Sutton, I believe we were talking about that it would be effective on, starting in August, with announcements in May, June, July at the board meetings, as well as announcements on our social media and our website.
Are we also gonna print that on the water bill? You know, sometimes you guys like print these.
Yes. So, the plan was to print it so that every full, each cycle gets one, so there'll be notices starting in May, saying the next cycle will have your trash back on it, and then starting in August, that they'll see the kind, the combined together.
Perfect.
I didn't realize that we were sending out two bills, because I pay mine online.
Yeah.
A lot of times right before the disconnect happens, but I pay mine online, so they're, they're together. But, and then, spring cleanup. Are we still doing that with GFL? You know how we get the dumpsters?
Yeah, we will approach them and set something up. We just discussed that the other day, but yes, we are.
Could we also approach them about possibly doing electronics pickup? I know some, I know is that, did you groan?
I've got a lot of experience with electronics.
I know it's expensive. I know several towns do their own little thing. In the state of Illinois, you can't throw electronics out. I know occasionally, Dave Kaler sponsors a pickup, or Swornson, or, if we could look into getting a sponsored electronics, when I walk the alleys, I see a lot of people who have dumped electronics. And I think if we had something, maybe if we could even work it annually, maybe that would stop people from dumping electronics.
I'll discuss that with them, see if they can add that to the list.
And then, one last thing. The INF fee that's on the water bills, now, I understand that that, what is it, five dollars a month fee, was funds previous loans that the water company had taken? How much of that INF fee is actually funding current projects or projects that are coming, or is it entirely funding loans that have-
There are a list of things that funds. I don't have it in front of me. Up in my office, I'll show you after the meeting, but there is a list, a long list, of what comes out of that fee. Unless, unless Superintendent Chandler knows offhand, I just don't-
One of the questions I get is that people say, "Why are we raising rates if we have an infrastructure fee on our bill?" But I try to explain to them that some of that, I don't know how much of it, it was the lion's share, half of it, goes to-
Stephanie, do you know what exactly?
So, Chief Sutton has the list of what all the loan covered, as well as projects that have been funded out of that. Currently, I think there's about three hundred thousand. This is the fund that when we talk about the budget, I always budget it down to zero dollars. The water is planning to purchase a generator for well-
Seven and eight.
Thank you. Out of that, and I believe that the cost of the generator, he's still looking into it, but it's around two hundred thousand dollars. There was also budgeted in the next year's cycle, I think we had some valve replacements that are in there as well. So, the majority of it is currently paying the loans, but every year, there's usually about forty thousand dollars or so, and that's been slowly accumulating for either emergencies. We used it to do the Lake Avenue replacement, and/or any projects that we need to help that are larger scale.
That was my question. I was just curious on how much of that infrastructure fee was obligated to pay loans? Would you say eighty percent of it?
It's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars annually, and about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in loan payments.
Okay.
Do you know how much debt we have left on that loan, just ballpark?
I do not, but I will look that up and get that to the board tomorrow.
So, it's safe to say that, that infrastructure fee, I don't like to speak in absolutes, but it's safe to say that infrastructure fee is not necessarily part of our big plan to correct the water quality issues, in the grand scheme of things?
If I may make a comment, if you agree or not, Stephanie, it was called an infrastructure fee, and I think, I don't think any of us were here at that time that was imposed. In my mind, that's a fee that really goes for ongoing maintenance of painting and valves and things like that. I don't really think it was going towards infrastructure, just operations, correct?
Well, I mean, that amount of money is not gonna, is not gonna take care of what needs to be taken care of, for sure.
It really did go for infrastructure, did it?
Well, it might have went for a stretch of main that went, you know, like a loop lane, like to add a loop in, to get rid of a dead end every once in a while or something, you know?
But I think when people think of infrastructure, they think of new mains, they think-
New, well, it does, it goes to new valves. The loans it's paying off is for the water towers and the water meters, probably.
Considering the purchases that have been made with it, I think that it would be fair, not to say operating costs, we're not talking about salaries. It's never gone for day-to-day things, but equipment, it's gone for definitely things that were equipment, and were not traditionally infrastructure.
I think we're splitting hairs, but I-
Yes. No, I think you've, I think I understand what you're saying, and I, yes, it's not traditional infrastructure.
I believe I was here when they came out with that, and we wanted to give it a name, and-
Could we rename it?
That sounded like a good name for it, pretty much.
So, it has no reason to be named that, that's just what you guys-
Yeah, that's what we decided to come up with, that way, if there was any, well, come on, you all say you're gonna add another bill to my water, and what is, you put on infrastructure, they're not-
I would love to rename it.
So, could you?
Maintenance?
Yeah. I think you're onto something there.
I mean, it confuses people, and I get hit on it constantly, that we have an infrastructure fee. Why isn't it fixing the infrastructure? One, it's not a drop in the bucket, and two, infrastructure's a horrible name for it.
And you don't, Stephanie, you don't know offhand how much that payoff is for that?
I do not, but I will get that to the board tomorrow.
Is it in six figures?
Uh, I would say it's probably, yes, it's probably in, we took it out for one point five. We've paid on it for at least ten years, so probably we're looking at high six figures.
High six, okay. Just, I mean, just a thought, you have a surplus, you know, pay that thing down, and get rid of that fee, and focus on real-
Well, if, I like that idea. I'm not, but Stephanie said that other things are being paid by that fee as well. So, if we got rid of the fee, I would love to get rid of a fee.
But hopefully, as you improve your infrastructure, you shouldn't have as many operational costs and things going wrong, like mains breaking all the time, and, you know, having to pay for the crews being called on for water main breaks.
Yeah, and when we were talking about the capital improvement plan for the water department, I remember mentioning then, that I would love to see that fee go away, and just incorporate all that in the five and twenty-year plan, instead of-
Into the rates.
Into the rates, instead of having fees and rate increases.
It's a bad term, and I agree with you on that. Give it some thought, and-
Okay.
Is that all of your miscellaneous?
I have, I have something real quick, if I can, while we're talking about water. We will be flushing our hydrants next week, beginning Monday. Everyone knows that that causes a stir up, like unfortunately we had, obviously, to help clean out the mains and get what's built up throughout. We do it twice a year, so, built up, get it all cleared out as much as we can, and then this will, this should be the last time we're doing the flushing the way we are, because our hydraulic model is going to begin working on that, and that's gonna come up with a whole unidirectional way of flushing, which is more efficient and gets them cleaner. It's just a new program.
I don't know the verbiage that we use, and maybe we do communicate it like this, but when we communicate the hydrant flushings, do we tell the citizens that the reason we're doing it is to remove the sediment? Because some people don't understand what hydrant flushing is.
I can certainly throw some verbiage in there that kind of tries to explain that.
Yeah. If you explain it that we're trying to remove it now, so you don't get it unexpectedly later.
Right.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna be building this, this land?
Filtration plant, yeah.
Filtration. Do we have to have somebody certified to run it?
That is correct, yeah.
Have we already found or started getting that person?
We do not. We have one guy who has passed the test, but he has to get like three thousand hours in that kind of plant before he can.
Right, right, and I knew that was something we had talked about in the past, so I didn't know if it already started getting-
The options would be to seek someone and hire them full-time who has that licensing, or contract it out until our guys, who have that certification, will get the hours.
Is there a way to send them someplace that already has one of these to get some of the hours, until we have it up and running?
Yeah, that actually was, Don Toll from Wood and Kern thought if there was some way that one of our guys could go, but I mean, you're giving up a guy, you know, to hours during the day to go work.
I, I guess my thought was, is like with the summer months coming up and stuff, and you guys hire the extra help and things like that, that it might be a good time to send them someplace. You could-
We're not getting any summer help this year.
Oh, you're not getting any summer help?
That's a good cut.
Oh.
Yeah, that's-
Did I prove that?
Yeah.
I know you have a lot going on, but when we set out, when we send out the notifications about the hydrant flushing, can we identify, like, which neighborhoods you'll be doing each day?
Every, every time we send it out, there's a schedule. It says it on that schedule, what day we're doing what.
I just couldn't remember. I knew there was for picking, for the ice picking, but I don't know for the hydrants, if it's like-
Yeah, and it's, and, just to be clear, and I know not everybody's lived here for forty years, but we've literally done it the exact same way twenty-five years I've been here. So, every Monday, we always start right here. I mean, it's every week. Every time we do it, it's, it's in the same order.
Okay, well, I've lived here thirty, almost forty years, and I don't know which days my house-
I was gonna say, I feel the same way. I was like, this is so condescending, I'm like, we shouldn't know this.
And not only that, I've ran into people who've been here a long time that don't understand why it happens.
Right.
They know we do it, they know when it happens, but they don't understand why.
It is to, it is to help exercise the fire hydrants, so they're available for our fire department, and to clear out the mains, and to help stop the stirring up.
I just know all of a sudden you're up the street cleaning out my driveway, so.
Well, I just gotta brag about my wife, because she knows about it, and she knows when it happens, and she tells me about it, and I was raised here, so.
And we will be using our new notification system. We've been using that, letting everybody know. It will go out daily that week, explaining, and it'll say every day, you know?
Good.
Who's getting flushed, yeah. And strongly encourage, stay away from doing laundry if possible. It should calm down after a few hours. It's unfortunate, but it helps clear everything out, so we have less situations like we had last week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other miscellaneous? Hearing none, we would be at general comments from the audience. If anyone would like to come up, make a general comment. Please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. General comments are open. Comments from the audience? Going once, twice, comments are closed. Trustee Gatt?
I'd just like to say to those who got elected today, who were, who had to compete against people, and who had to just walk in there, "Good job, congratulations."
I wrote your name in.
There was, there was no line there. I mean, it sure looked, okay. Anyhow, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Moved to second and to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye, say it.